Evening, everybody. Welcome to the Verona Public Schools Public Board of Education meeting. It is June 7, 2022, and we're calling the meeting to order. It's 7:17. We do apologize for being late. We did have extra things and confidential to cover. The meeting I said is called to order, and if everybody will please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Read in the meeting notice. This meeting is being conducted in compliance with the open meeting session, and the Verona Board of Education passed a resolution at its annual reorganization meeting held on January 5, 2021. The meeting set forth the schedule of its regular meetings, which resolution was within seven days of passage. The schedule was sent to the Verona Cedar Grove Times, the Star Ledger, the Township of Verona, and the VEA. Postings of this meeting setting forth the time, location, and agenda were posted at the Verona Board of Education office and on the Verona Public Schools District website. The Verona Board of Education operates under a consent agenda format. Any board member has the right to have an item pulled to be voted upon or discussed separately. Copies of tonight's agenda and resolutions have been made available to the public and press. Can you please do the roll call, Governor?
Roll call. Mrs. Fruski? Mrs. Prisco?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Here.
Mr. Day?
Here.
Mrs. Trappi?
Here.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And we have no presentations this evening, so we are going to roll into Dr. Fornari and the superintendent's report.
Good evening. There are many end-of-the-year events that are on our calendar, and I know that individual school schedules are hectic at this time of year. I'd like to take this time, however, to reflect on the many things that our students have experienced during the 2021-22 school year as it closes. This was the first full school year back in classrooms for students and staff. Although there were challenges with COVID-19 protocols and getting back to some sort of more usual activities and events, I think we should celebrate the stamina, perseverance, and positivity of our staff, students, and families. We should be proud of the accomplishments and hope that the coming days will see us continuing those celebrations as the month of June comes to a close. I'd like to comment on a situation that arose prior to this weekend regarding the SAT session that was supposed to be administered this past Saturday at Verona High School. Although the district did not have control over the cancellation of the SAT, nor did the College Board allow the district to reschedule the test administration, please note that the Verona Public Schools and, in particular, VHS administration and staff that made attempts to reschedule the assessment are very cognizant of the fact that students who were supposed to sit for the SAT this past Saturday were affected by this cancellation. We continue to contact the College Board and will be available as a site in the event that the College Board relents and allows a new test date prior to August 27. We're very sorry that this happened, and we'll do what we can to assist. The past week, our staff was able to voluntarily participate in the Grand River Solutions Climate and Culture Survey. Students in grades 7 through 12, whose parents have granted permission for their children to participate, will take the survey this week. All interviews conducted by Ms. Shipper are complete, and the data is being incorporated into the final report and recommendations that will be provided to the district in late June. Each of our subgroups have met three times with Ms. Shipper, twice virtually and once in person. The last meeting occurring in late May. Dr. Miller will continue to schedule subgroup meetings once the data and recommendations are shared with the district. As a precursor to our next board meeting, I'd like to announce that we will be honoring our 2021-2022 retirees at the June 21 board meeting for their years of dedicated service. We're looking forward to welcoming our retirees to the meeting. And this concludes my report. Board members, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Fornari. With the Grand River Solutions, do we have an idea of how many permission slips were granted, like out of 7 through 12 grade?
Yeah, so the last count I recall, and Dr. Miller has a much more accurate count than I do, I think that we're approximately 130 to 150 at the high school level and probably another 118 or so at the middle school level. So when you think about the number of students that we have in each of those grades, I would say, you know, we have maybe an eighth of the potential student population or so and probably about a quarter of the potential middle school population. So we'll get better final numbers for you in the coming days.
Thank you.
I want to thank Dr. Fornari for your comments about the unfortunate circumstances for our teachers. I have heard from parents, I know it's incredibly frustrating. These kids gave up a lot to be able to take the test, gave up on their academics in order to be able to study, and it's very frustrating for them, and I appreciate your comments on that. And I want to thank you for fighting for them, and I know you don't take no very well, and that this is not something that you're going to let go. And hopefully we can get resolved prior to your departure, because, you know, the kids deserve it. So thank you very much for fighting for them.
And I have to give a shout out to Mr. Cogdill and Mr. Merkler, because they have been even more relentless than I have. So everybody's really trying to plug for the students who really can't otherwise, you know, make this happen for themselves.
If there's no other comments or questions for Dr. Fornari, we're going to move to committee reports. And we have education, special education?
Yes. So at the very top of the education committee agenda, we did, we went over the Policy 0143.2, which relates to New Jersey law requiring a student representative to the Board of Education. We looked at several models from surrounding towns, and then we looked at Strauss-Esmay's template, and then we looked again at the law, and we decided we needed more time to talk about it. So that is not on the agenda tonight, and we'll, we have another Ed Committee meeting next week to go over policy as a whole. And something else that we did talk about that's not on the agenda that relates to that is the Policy Wellness Check that we had done by New Jersey School Boards. And essentially, there's, they, they went through all of our policies and identified nine critical policies that were not there. So that is really the scope of next week's meeting is to go through those policies and make sure that we can match them to the goals and strategic plan of our district. And those will all be on the next meeting's agenda, ideally. Curriculum Council is meeting tomorrow, and that's their last meeting for the year. Curriculum rating was posted on the first, and interested staff members need to email, and this is for the summer, to email by June 20. Dr. Fornari reported out on the third DEI committee meeting. Science report card revisions occurred at the elementary levels, and then there will be one more meeting in June. Social studies revisions will occur over the summer and early fall, and then to be approved at the end of September in advance to the first trimester report cards. Middle school math teachers and Algebra I high school teachers met with Amplify, which is the math program that we adopted for those grades, that's 6 through 8, and then Algebra I. They met on the second to do some PD with that program. Elementary and HPW will have their, their last map growth assessment of the year, and that's June 6 and June 13, respectively. And that's, this is going to really be the first time that these kids will have the three in a year, and it will really give us a great opportunity to track growth, identify areas of weakness, identify kids who maybe need to be ironised, also identify children who maybe need some more enrichment, and that all goes along with our edmentum program that they're using within the classroom for supplements. The Humanities Supervisor, Mrs. Peter, met with elementary principals, Dr. Lanzo, and Mr. Monticelli, and nine elementary teachers to finalize plans for a new social studies curriculum. And I believe that, I don't think that they've finalized that yet. I think we'll hear about that at the next Ed Committee meeting. On June 2, there was a PD day, and the staff had opportunity to work on PDPs, professional development plans, elementary report cards, curriculum, professional development, and middle school math. So that was, that was when they learned about Amplify, as well as Mrs. Peter and Mrs. Studo hosted an informational meeting on teachers interested in the letters training program, which is just another tool that we're adding to our toolbox to help with phonics and the balanced literacy as a whole. And students are, Mr. Peter, Mrs. Peter and Mr. Stevenson are working with elementary teachers to identify eligible students for the Splash Summer Learning Program. And then the calendar for next year was adjusted after staff gave us feedback regarding homework-free weekends and not bumping them into VMAC weeks, because it just was like a lot of no homework, which isn't always a bad thing. But they decided that, you know, it really disrupted like continuum as well as it, it ended up, the way that they were originally situated, it was like right before report cards, so it didn't work out very well. And again, that was based on staff feedback. That's it for Ed Committee, for Special Committee. The CPAC meeting was, the last Public CPAC meeting of the year was last night. And June 21, there is going to be a mental wellness certification presentation. And essentially, what it is, is Dr. Moreyello is going to present, essentially, our district is now a certified mental wellness district. Thirteen school counseling staff representing all grade levels have successfully met the requirements to earn certifications as certified school mental wellness specialists. And this is really part of our overall objectives, to increase mental wellness and really make mental health a priority in our district. This is part of the Thrive Mental Wellness Program that we approved last year that really coincided with the Rutgers Behavioral Health Program. And they completed, these teachers completed year-long coaching and certification program provided by Thrive Alliance, was nine and a half hours of online earning and 32 hours of live coaching. And essentially, we've made a commitment to, through this certification, we've made a commitment to provide Tier 1, Tier 2, and Tier 3 supports to our students. And I think that that, you know, it goes right along with this, you know, with the idea of response to intervention for academics. The same sort of interventions need to be provided for mental health and mental wellness. You know, there is not a one-size-fits-all, and I think this is really what this program has sort of allowed for us to achieve. Not only that, but it, they have to continually go through recertification processes. So this isn't like a one-and-done. We have to continue to do this. And this was paid through some SRF funding, and I think it gets paid for another year, another one year or two years, Mr. Walker. I don't remember what he said.
End of 2024.
End of 2024, and then we have to look at how we're going to incorporate this into our budget. But that will be part of the special education budget. Still waiting on that bus. We still have till the end of June. You never know. But it's, the supply issue is just, I mean, look, we're all living it. We live it every day. It's top to bottom, left to right. There's no escaping it, unfortunately, but it stinks. You know, really hoping that we can get that small bus by the end of June. That way, we're not using a giant bus for just a few students, and it's just, you know, a safety issue at that point as well. And that was it. Did I miss anything, Mr. Walker?
A few things I want to just illuminate a little bit. We did touch upon, you know, you talked about the calendar as far as days off and the no homework days and things like that. It looks like we're still kind of TBD as to how we want to go about if we're going to be able to, if we have snow days or if we're going to be able to make them remote, like there's more questions than answers right now as to how we want to do that, but that's something we're looking into. I just wrote these down randomly. Probably the one, I read all the emails as we all do from within the community. So one of the hot topics that I get asked about, we all get asked about is the health and sex ed standards, but there's no update to give on that. That'll have to come to the committee if the curriculum is written or whatever that is, but no update on that right now. Sarah talked about the student rep at the board meeting, and we kind of like the idea of the spirit of the law being, and Dr. Fornari kind of, you know, supported this as well, that, you know, it's civics in action. So if perhaps if a kid's the freshman class president or the sophomore class president or some kind of rotation for that, you know, they come to the board meeting, then they report back when they meet their, their peers that elected them. So I think it's a cool thing to model. You know, we, we get a lot, we got a lot of emails this week about the kindergarten numbers and the spacing requests and things like that. So I'm hopeful that we're having another Ed Committee meeting in a couple of weeks. So hopefully just kind of get a general idea of where the numbers are for that. I will say, I'm really happy to see that, it doesn't sound like it's a big deal, but it is. Field trips, you know, being back is a big deal, especially from, from where we were. And I also like the idea that co-curricular activities are back. Like I saw a baseball car wash that I paid for, and then I also have to pay for the fourth grade or Forest Avenue, which I haven't paid for yet, and I have to. But it, I like seeing this. And I hope I'm in the right committee on this one, but it looks like we're not going to get an electric bus anymore. But that was, I think that was our committee here. Okay. And then the last thing is, I got a little grumpy because New Jersey School Boards Association, our association was canceling in-person events. So I wrote an email to their new executive director saying, like, we're working our tails off being open for kids. You know, why, you know, we want that emulated from the people that we look to. He got back to me, and it was, I thought it was a good conversation. So hopefully they're, they're going to look to rethink their philosophy on that. That's all.
But in regard to the note that you sent to New Jersey School Boards, because I know you're slated to go for your training, right?
Well, that's what, that was, I was upset because they canceled it because of a rise in COVID uptick.
Yeah, I saw your note that you shared with us.
And I, I know my data where I'm at, but I'm sure it's very similar here. We unmask the kids, and we're not seeing outbreaks left and right here, right? So like, I think that the, in my purse, this is my personal view. But the association that we pay into, we want them to-
Are they still doing the training, and it's going to be virtual?
No.
No, they just canceled it.
Together.
With the writing of, it's because of a local COVID uptick. And they're sending their field reps on the, they're sending their field reps out to meetings, but they're not keeping their, their main office staff. So I was very happy that the gentleman that's taking over wrote back to me. So I'm hopeful that we're, we get, see that positive trend.
Yeah, all right. Thank you for following up on that.
One other thing I just wanted to add about the calendar for next year is, you know, Verona had really good foresight in looking at Election Day and with the new law that was passed in January, new election laws, especially regarding police officers not being allowed to be near voting sites, making sure our students stay as safe as possible. We were fortunate enough to have this extra day to close. I'm hoping that we can have further discussion to plan ahead to next year's voting days and make those official days, whether they're just PD days for teachers or they're just days off totally, or how we're going to work this, because, yeah, I think we did a good job of thinking ahead, you know, a month or so in advance. Not every district has done that, and they sort of got caught. So I'm hoping we can sort of start that conversation soon.
Thank you. Is there anything else on that? If not, we are going to go to athletics. And Mrs. Prisco, I'm going to count on you, because I forgot my notebook with athletics and community resources. Oh, that's right. We didn't. Oh, good. I don't feel so bad.
So athletics, we met the other day, and spring sports basically all have wrapped up their seasons, except track and field are still going probably till, and June, like 20, I believe, though they should be wrapping up their season. At our next board meeting, Mrs. Palmarese will be here giving her recap on all the spring sports with all their updates on their athletics and athletes and their achievements. So she'll be here at our next meeting. Our gym floor in the old gym is fixed and beautiful. So I'm happy to see that done. Let's see, we, the Sports Boosters Dinner is set for June 20 to honor all the senior athletes. We had, the GNT semifinals were hosted here, and I believe everything was a success with that. Verona was not in that, but we did host it. So, and we did have the Verona dugout club and softball club, I believe, working the snack stands. So thank you to them, and I believe-
Thing that we talked about briefly was the Positive Coaching Alliance. So that was a third-party consultant that we had contracted with before pandemic. And they come in and they work not only with our coaches, but with our students to have a whole, you know, positive experience during any kind of sporting events. And I think part of our contract, like it, it was in sessions, so we still have one or two sessions left. So Mrs. Palmarese was going to set that up. And then going forward, when we do our budget and next year, when Ms. De Giuseppe comes on, it's going to be something that we decide if we want to renew with them and take that forward or let that go. So that was it. Does anybody have any questions or comments on athletics? Okay, and then Community Resources did not meet, and then that brings us over to Buildings and Grounds Facilities.
We did meet. Mrs. Trappi and I and the new Director of Facilities. And he did a wonderful job. First thing, safety and security. We talked a little bit about that. Of course, that's a topic that, you know, we'll always be talking about. There's additional training that'll be taking place, run, hide, fight. There's different trainings being offered by the police and then various state organizations. We're looking at buying additional equipment. Those are things that are being worked on by Director of Facilities. There's certain items that we have ordered that are still in a holding pattern, but hopefully we'll get them sooner than later. FM Brown, working on drain cleanout and masonry work, trying to get a quote from one of our preferred providers for that. So, but again, drain, drain cleanout, mason work is going to be a top priority for FM Brown. Sustainable energy. We've had multiple conversations about this, and I'm really looking at, you know, solar opportunities for VHS and maybe other, other buildings in the district. And we have, you know, looking for, we have a proposal from one organization, looking at different options and doing our due diligence on that still. So, you know, I'm, I'm just want to make sure that, you know, we did a lot of wonderful work for referendum. And I sort of feel like I'm repeating myself, but I want to make sure that we're not putting anything on the roof that will impact that. But I was told that there's a lot of new technologies, there's rollers, and so it's not really technically bolted on the roof. It's a sort of a movable project, sort of speak, on the roofs that allows you to get the solar energy. So Forest Avenue Ball Field, this came up recently. It was reported to the Department of Public Works. And we actually got some pictures of the forest field retaining wall. I remember when my kids were playing up there, it was a little beat up, and now it looks, it's a lot worse. You definitely see the cracks and safety's, you know, first for everyone. So they put up some cones in some of the areas and tape to block that off to make sure that, you know, parents and students don't go near those areas. And then we're planning on doing, I guess, internal job on that for, make, do that in the summer to potentially either repair or replace that wall. So I think right now we're leaning toward repair if possible, so, but we'll see how that goes.
If I can interrupt, is it the wall by the baseball field or the wall by the actual building?
Well, by the baseball field.
Oh, so.
So it's, it's got the water starting to, you know, penetrate it, because it's just, it's just, it's starting to angle forward and crack. So, yeah. District HVAC, initial issues were resolved per Director of Facilities. There's a few outstanding issues in classrooms still being addressed. I know if there is, it's an issue in the classroom, we have mobile units that they move in and out of those particular rooms. And then I did ask a question about thermostats, because one of the, one of the, you know, members of the public had mentioned that there's not covers on the thermostats. And I was told that thermostats are designed with occupancy sensors, so it's adjusted by the computer, by the occupancy. So there's no adjustments that are done actually on the actual units itself. So people can't go into a room and play around with the adjustments. It's done by the, the sensors or by the, you know, administrator. High school softball fence, again, we're looking to get, you know, get a source and a quote for that. I know some people have offered to do some things for the district. I know the Director of Facilities is working with various vendors and looking for, just to get a couple quotes to validate, you know, the best way to proceed. Another thing is that he's looking at getting a net that will go from the scoreboard all the way around the backstop and just beyond the parking lot at a height of about 25 feet. So I guess a security net for the, for the fields. Then a similar net will be put behind one of the goalposts next year. And what else do I have here? Shared Service Agreement, we mentioned, we talked a little bit about that. We didn't have a lot of time to talk about that, but that's the Shared Services Agreement that came up in discussion with the council, with the town, possibly looking at documents that we had previously presented to the town. I'm also maybe amending that with certain items, including the water, water management for the town. You got that, Sarah? That was for you.
I had a question about the fence, Jim. So when you say the baseball sub-offense, you mean like when they hit a home run in that fence? Or the fence, like where you hit a foul ball doesn't go into like the-
There's, so there's the softball fence. So there's the baseball fence, which was black, the black netting. And then there was the softball fence, which was like a white plastic fence.
PCV piping.
Yeah.
It's all cracked and-
Right, and it's, some of it's like completely demolished on the ground. Part of it was, you know, we think, there, there's really no way to know for sure. They say some of it was vandalism, but most of it was like weather. So we need to replace that in some form, and that's what they're looking at, what's most cost-effective.
That was initially, I believe, purchased by the, some of the parents who had purchased that, and they thanked them for that.
And answer, to further answer that question, part of the netting that Mr. Day mentioned is the height for, if a foul ball is hit when you're, you know, this, the way the backstop is designed, balls go and right into that parking lot.
Yeah.
That's the lower lot. So there are signs up, but that's not good enough. So they've been looking, actually, this is maybe two years now. The district has been looking at that, and, you know, we wanted to make sure that, that that project also gets done. So that's part of what Mr. Nutrile was, was talking about.
Yeah, I think that's great, and just maybe food for thought. It is not immediately, because the season just ended, but like, I go to these baseball games, and we have kids chasing foul balls and like the sticks and the woods and, you know, it's, 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 the kid comes out, he looks like the stick is all over him. I don't know what the solution would be, but perhaps something to make it so that we're not having our, the freshmen and the team, you know, kind of climbing trees to get fouls.
Can I just comment on that? I do think that was definitely looked into by Mr. Merkler for the baseball field to put, but he found out that you have to put telephone poles in order to make it high enough, the netting behind for the ball, so they don't go, that's what he found out. And it was very, very expensive. The baseball side for the foul balls to go back up into the, into the woods.
I get that. I'm just wondering, like, would it-
I don't know.
Would it be something to consider just clearing out that vegetation, you know, would that might also solve the problem?
To make it so the kids don't get, yeah. Is there any, since we're talking fences, is there, the baseball fence, did that come up at all? Because I know the baseball team, the dugout club, has spent thousands of dollars to fix that fence over and over each year. Has that ever come up? Because that fence is the home run fence.
As well as-
Yeah.
Basically, we were told that fence is still usable at this point.
Okay.
There's no discussion of replacing that. Could come up, but not at this time. Do you want to talk about the dream? Okay. I will, I will defer to Mrs. Trappi with the dream. Yeah.
So something that sort of came up, and this is all part of this larger stormwater management conversation. So just to backtrack a little bit, you know, we all try to listen in on, to the town council meetings when we can. And, you know, we know that they had the Army Corps of Engineer out here to help advise them on stormwater management. However, the schools were not included in that conversation. So the hope is that, you know, going forward, that, you know, there's a new town manager now and that any conversations around stormwater management, that we can partner closely with the township to start looking at mitigation opportunities. Something that we discussed during committee, something that I brought up to our new facilities director or supervisor was that, you know, I would be looking for something like a five-year plan. What does this look like five years from now? you know, I would be looking for something like a five year plan. What does this look like five years from now? What does this look like 10 years from now, based on statistics, based on state reporting, based on national reporting? You know, the data is all there. We just need to compile it. We can lean on the township has already done a lot of this legwork and work closely with them on looking at what we need to do as a district physically, from a facility standpoint, financially, in order to help prevent any flooding issues. We're already seeing it, right? Playground damage, which we're still working on as reported, right? We're still working on getting that fixed, working. Nick has not given, Mr. Natural has not given up on that. And he is fighting for us to make sure that we, you know, they come out and repair that. But we're also looking at the retaining wall that's, you know, being damaged and things like that. So, you know, I had asked Mr. Cruz and Mr. Natural to start thinking about what does that plan look like? How are we going to work with the township on it? And you know, hopefully by the end of the year, before we start looking at next year's budget, you know, November is really where we start looking at the budget that that is part of that. And we have to start taking those kinds of costs into consideration from a facility standpoint. With that said, part of what's going on with the HVAC is that there is a code in town that says, and I know Connor is planning on being here at the end of, once this project is finalized to report out on this, probably using more appropriate language than I can understand, but that the condenser piping needs to flow directly into our drain basins to town code, which Mr. Natural has already developed a system of making sure those basins are cleaned to help prevent flooding, right? That's, those are our stormwater catches. So we've already, you know, taken care of half of that battle. And now we have to make sure our condensers. So that is an additional cost. And you know, Mr. Day and I did express concern over the fact that that wasn't caught and that that is something that the district has paid for. But it is part of town code. We have no choice. We have to make sure that that's connected. So we do have a plumber coming out to, I don't know, did they come out to give us the quote or are we, are they coming out to give us the quote?
Coming out.
I don't think they've come out yet to give us the quote. Because at the time of this meeting, we did not have a quote yet. Just sort of see what the scope of this project looks like. And that's before they dig. So, I mean, it is concerning. It's concerning. It's frustrating. It's concerning. So, you know, to be frank, but you know, it's something we have to do. We don't have a choice with the new HVAC units. So anything to add to that, Mr. Day?
Okay. The only other thing I want to clarify is that while the Facilities Committee hasn't been talking about the baseball fence, the Athletics Committee has, not in committee yet, but that's on Mr. Pomeriz's agenda. And as far as that's concerned, there is money in the budget to take a look at that and make sure that that is addressed. Our 2022, 2023, my goodness, budget just opened for us to be able to start making purchases. So she and Mr. Cruz are looking to make sure those requisitions get taken care of.
Does, does the baseball field also double as like, I don't know, like a football practice field during the fall or like a, like other, other sports play there? All right. So we, we would need it to be like mobile, easily moved kind of equipment, right? Okay.
That concludes the committee reports. And next on our regular agenda is public comments on agenda action items. So if anybody has any comment on anything that we are voting on a resolution, now would be the time to speak to that. And if not, we're going to close public comments and go on to discussion items. Does anybody, any board members have any particular discussion items, old or new business that you wanted to address? If not, the only thing that I am going to bring up is the candidate packets from New Jersey School Boards to run for open seats is available. It's on the New Jersey School Board, the NJ SBA.com website. And there's a link there that says candidacy kits and it explains everything that would need to be done to get on the ballot. And the deadline for submitting your petition is July 25th at 4:00 PM. And we do have two seats that are going to be up grabs. And if there's nothing else on discussion items, we are going to move on to roll call to vote on resolutions. So I need a motion to accept resolutions number one through 11.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Day and second by Mrs. Drappy. Is there discussion on any of those items? I just want to look at number three, and that's the change of title.
Yeah.
Can we add to that to just have clarification that it's changing from blank, whatever the old title is to Chief of Technology Officer?
Sure.
Just so when we go back in ten minutes, we know where we were and where we went.
Yeah. So the, the former title is Technology Manager.
And there's no financial impact with that at all, correct?
Would you let me to give you a little rationale as to why the process was made? Yeah. So sure. So the title manager doesn't really cover all of the things that we ask our soon to hopefully be Chief Technology Officer to do. There are many tasks that were actually in the job, just the old job description that were glossed over by, and anything else the district superintendent says, you know, you gotta do this. So but our Technology Manager, as you know, manages and handles many things, supervises his staff, plans for technology innovations and, and continues to bring new and innovative ideas to the district and not only ideas, but then follows through and makes them happen within the budget. So for those reasons, we thought it was high time that that title changed. The currently Technology Manager sits on the superintendent's cabinet along with the directors of special services and curriculum instruction and assessment, the business administrator and the superintendent. So the title was really intended to recognize that level of authority and also that record of contribution to the district. The reason we're not using the term director is because based on New Jersey State Code, anybody with the title director, and it doesn't matter what director of whatever you are, must hold a principal certification. And most folks who are in leadership roles in the area of technology don't have an educational degree. They have a commercial degree. So that's another reason we chose this, this title, which is also a title that others, other districts use for a person in this position.
Do you get a seat over there now?
And that, and that whole description is in the public folder. I just checked. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. If there's no other discussion on resolutions, I am going to ask you to please do the roll call for resolutions. Sure. Roll, roll call on the approval of resolutions number one through 11. Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mrs. Drappy?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freski?
Yes.
Pass. Thank you very much. And we do have addendum resolutions. So I need a motion to accept addenda resolutions number one through seven.
So move.
Move by Mrs. Drappy?
Second.
I'm going to go second with Mrs. Prisco. So competitive up here. And is there any discussion on one through seven? Does anybody have any discussion on those? No? If not, can we do the roll call on that piece? Sure. Roll call on addendum resolutions. Number one through seven, Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mrs. Drappy?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freski?
Yes.
Pass. Thank you very much. And then at this point, we are going to open the floor to public comments. So at this point, if you have anything that you'd like to comment on, please come to the podium and we'll need a name and address.
Thank you. Congratulations. Maria Scolanti, Six Buck Claire Place. My questions regarding security. I understand Mr. Day mentioned that they had purchased new equipment. I just wanted to confirm if that new equipment that was discussed today is for safety. And then the other thing is regarding overall safety in the six school buildings. How often is that updated? Do you guys audit that? There have been breaches where students have, or, or people not authorized have entered school buildings. How often does the school system look at the soft spots in security in the school buildings? And do you foresee any changes coming in the next year, for example, to harden? I don't know if that's the correct term, but that's what comes to mind. Those spots in the buildings that can allow somebody not authorized to enter. Thank you.
So in answer to your first question about equipment, Mr. Cruz, I think, mentioned this at a prior meeting that some of the equipment has to be measured for the internal doors that are in the school and then fabricated. So those, those pieces of equipment are being fabricated currently. And as soon as they're done, they'll be delivered. Another piece, some of the money that we had allocated from the Alyssa's Law Grant and also in the budget are pieces of equipment that are being quoted right now. And they have to do with the ability to have non auditory alerts visible from outside the school building for to alert anybody who's outside. If something is happening to stay, you know, not to enter the building. So that's for a safety thing, you know, if, if we've got a lockdown, for example, we don't want parents, visitors, students to try and come back into the building. That's supposed to be a visual that says, you know, stay away. As far as the oh, and also an upgrade to our camera system that the police department has access to. So there, there are those pieces. The schools, not only annually, do we have to upgrade and update and submit to the State Department of Education through our county office, the school safety plans and the school safety and security templates. But we also have the Verona Police Department come in very frequently and they are part of our drilling process. So they'll visit and they will give us critiques on how those drills went, not every drill, but they'll, they'll pop in. And then sometimes they'll just do random walkthroughs and grab the administrator. And I've been on a couple of those in the schools and will walk the building during a, a drill, particularly lockdown type drills to make sure that the processes that we say we have in place are really in place. And if there are any vulnerabilities, we work through that and try to make those corrections right away. So there is that piece. I want to just say that for school districts, and we know we've, you know, I commented on at the last meeting, just how devastating these continued events at schools, especially when children and staff members are vulnerable and are affected. The police and the folks who guide us during that whole safety protocols, setup, design, implementation. They always say what the schools are putting in place is to slow the bad guy down. Right? So you want to have those, you want to make sure that your facility is hardened. And that is, that is a term that we use enough so that it deters someone who is not supposed to be in the building from getting in. As we know, in any facility, I mean, very often, even in our own homes, we don't always do the things that we know we're supposed to do to, to make it harder for somebody to come in. But the idea with schools is really to delay, delay, delay. So the police have more time to get to a situation emergent to help. You know, needs to have a minute or two. Thank goodness for us, we've got our police department very, very close to all of our schools. So the reaction time is much quicker. I've worked in districts that the, they don't have their own police department and they rely on the state police. And so it's much harder for the state police to get to a school in the same kind of time that you would hope, you know, and they do their best, believe you me. They do their absolute best, but you know, we're very fortunate here to at least, you know, our police department is very close to all of our schools. Thank goodness. However, it's all of that security drilling and equipment is really to make sure that we give the, the emergency responders, police in particular, time to get to the site. Nothing is perfect and it, it's a very scary scenario when we hear about these things that do happen. So this is why we say we take safety and security very seriously. If we do find an area that's a soft spot, we try to harden it. If we do find a procedure that's lax, we try to make sure that everybody really knows what that procedure is. And then if there is an issue, we correct it. So you know, we're doing everything that we possibly can, but as far as the, the things for next year, we don't wait until next year. We make those changes as quickly as we possibly can. So every year we're reevaluating, every year you may hear we've upgraded this system. We've changed that system. We've made this modification because you know, the more you hope for the best and do nothing, the more vulnerable you are. So we do take it very seriously. So I, I hope that answers your question.
If I, I know Jorge's out at the workshop, but I remember Jorge was telling us about, you know, making sure that Verona was compliant with, with the Alyssa's Law, which I, I think the real strategic part of that is that, you know, the, you waste a lot of time if, if there has to be a call from the teacher's classroom to the principals of the main office to start a drill or start a lockdown or start an evac or, or shelter in place. And I know Jorge, I, I don't work for the districts. I don't know how they implemented it, how they're, they're in the process, but I know Jorge was very interested in making, in advancing that so that if, if someone looks at their classroom window and they see something that gives them pause, you know, they could start the lockdown.
Yeah, exactly.
And I believe that also has something where the, the, the teachers through their phones are very likely to be able to contact right direct, to not go to 911 and then bounce it back somewhere else, but going right to the, the Verona dispatch. So I liked that, that Jorge was on it before, like it was, you know, the, the thing to be on. So I imagine we're in good shape with that.
I guess I just want to chime in a little bit about, you know, one of the things that we're, you know, of course with the high school, we have lots of doors. And it's hard trying to make sure all those doors are particularly locked or somebody comes in, you know, they somehow prop it open. There's, and so I think we just have to make sure that you know, there's somebody verifying or validating either through the camera or just a walk around.
And they do.
Yeah. And I know they do that. I just think it's something that, yeah, people ask about that a lot.
Yep.
And, and the other thing that, that, you know, being on the board for as long as I've been on, it's come up multiple times about student IDs. Validate the student is, you know, belongs in the district, maybe show it outward. I mean, you've worked at other districts. Have you seen that in effect and has it worked?
Yeah. In a number of districts, the student ID is everybody wears the same color lanyard, the same land, you know, all the same lanyard, the ID isn't necessar- some districts make it a swipe card. That's worked in some places, not so effective in others. But the ID at least alerts the eye, you know, you look for an ID and if you don't see it, then that's the anomaly. So that's where I think the value comes. You know, sure, somebody can hand their ID to somebody else. And that's always a, but it's less likely to be the case if somebody randomly tries to come into the building who looks like a student or, you know, I mean, we have an open campus lunch. So you definitely, you know, instead of two times during the course of the day that your doors are open so students can come in, you've got four. Right? So that becomes, you know, it, it magnifies the difficulty of monitoring those entrances and exits. But we do have cameras on the doors, the doors when, when they're supposed to be, they're locked and they lock automatically. So, you know, if we do, the adults have, you know, the swipe cards. So there is some hardening of the, of the system based on the locking of doors and the cameras, as I said, are at the entrances and exits. But the reason that we want to enhance those cameras is they're, they're getting a little old and they're a little more grainy than we would want to. But the reason that we want to enhance those cameras is they're, they're getting a little old and they're a little more grainy than we would want it to be. So the upgrade to the camera system is to make the, the visual even more sharp.
I think it's fair to say that, you know, the kids and then the administrators too, like before COVID, we were all instructed to have one entry point or as minimal entry points as possible, lock the doors. Then COVID hits, we're told to have as many entry points as possible, open every door, every window. So I, I think, I get why it's confusing for the kids and the staff. And I feel like we're, we're waiting for that real balance of, you know, COVID's still going to be here. And sadly, so are the, the shootings. This is, this is where we're at. But I get why it's difficult and I think that, you know, when, when parents do speak up and I think the best thing parents can do is, you know, let the school know if you see something that, that you think the school administration should know about. And, and if you need any kind of help or if something's going at home, I think when you let the school know that, that anytime we can get, the school's got a lot of resources that at least help offer. And I think whenever you get a kid that might need help, some kind of help, that's a win.
Too, is that when, and I'm only at the middle school, so I can't speak for the high school. But I know middle school and at the elementary schools, there are administrators and teachers outside all the time. Anytime those doors are open, unlocked, allowing students in or out, there is a staff member there. I mean, the other day I dropped my daughter off from middle school in the morning and the door was wide open and I panicked. I didn't see anybody. So I called the office and they were like, no, there's somebody right there. And all I had to do is like tilt my head and there was literally somebody standing right inside the doorway. So like, again, like Mr. Rock said, see something, say something. If it just looks weird, just say it. And they'll either assure you or go, oh my God, you're right. You know what I mean? It's
Now, we appreciate that too, because, you know, and I'll, I'll speak to the high school because I'm there. You know, we've had instances very similar to the one you just described at the middle school. You know, parent may say, I dropped my child off and didn't see a soul inside the lobby. The administrator and at day happened to be a police officer was also there. So, you know, it's better that we know that there could be an issue, even though the result is, nope, they were there, they were just not visible to the outside. And, you know, so at the high school, there are really two entrance, entrances that are covered. And there's a staff member always assigned to the one. And the main entrance always has somebody there when, when it's, you know, arrival and dismissal. Actually, also inside the lobby, we've got a series of teachers who are on duty at that new desk that's there. So if there isn't an administrator, there is a teacher there on duty and I've watched the rotation and they tag each other. You know, they really don't leave that desk vacant unless somebody says, call Mr. Merkler or call Mr. Cogdill because I'm going to be two seconds or five minutes or whatever it is late for that duty, and then they go out and step out. So, you know, they really do try to make sure that all of that is covered.
Thank you very much for the conversation. Is there any other comment?
George Kozcheck, Verona, New Jersey. I just wanted to reiterate a little bit on the, the fencing. I belong to the dugout club since the 2018, 19 season and have been manning the fence per se. The issue with the fences is not the fence, it's the wind in the field. The wind in the field is the biggest killer of the fence. The white fence is not a good fence for that field because it's too much mass. The wind just blows it down all the time. People have tried to block it up with different items, sandbags, things of that nature, but the fence is made to fall down. So now the fence is made to stand up and the wind wants to knock it down. It's just demolishing it, you know, I, that's, that's not a good fence, the white one. The one that we are using, the, it's called the Grand Slam Above Ground Fencing. It's made also to be in the ground, but beforehand you would have to put a structure in before they put the turf. And it's just a little hole that has a little puck on the top and you push the pole down and there it stays. That was never put in. So now you have one that has a duck's foot with some weighted items below. But the fence is a great fence for safety. When somebody goes and runs into that fence, it does what it's supposed to do. It gives and it doesn't break into, into spears or things of that nature that could hurt somebody. The, the fence is a costly item to maintain every year. Every year we go through one section, which costs roughly about 1,500 bucks. We started with one section many years ago and added on to that year after year after year. So we're about $7,000, $8,000 into that already. But every year we do have to purchase at least a $1,500 section to replace what the wind has knocked over or broken. The wind takes and knocks over, it could move that fence 20, when there's nobody there with the wind, just like my hand. But it also breaks as the wind is blowing it. So just the fence being there alone, nobody using it, it still has a chance to be broken and it's got to be up all season. You can't take it down after every game. I would like to see that fence for everybody to use. And this way we only have one fence and we only have to buy the parts and we can share the parts as we move on. And as far as the netting, that, that's the home run fencing. The foul ball fencing, I think, is needed on both sides to, for both, you know, spectators and, and, and cars. On the baseball side, they don't need to have the telephone pole looking one. It's more so the about eight feet over the fence where the ball can go over and hit somebody in the stands. If the ball goes 30 feet in the air and goes past and goes out into Sampson, that's, you know, that's nothing you could do about that. But I'd like to see something that's going to keep people safe, at least standing or sitting in the, in the, in the bleachers. There's many a ball that comes by that people are not paying attention. And quite a few people have gotten hit, a couple of windshield have been broken, cars have been dented. You're not going to stop them all, but that would help. And as far as the last thing would be the gate, the gate right now, we only have one on the far side on the visitor. When you walk through that gate, you're immediately on a, there's a metal grate and many rocks and vegetation and things of that nature. We were looking to have a gate on the opposite side where it's more groomed. And you open up the gate and you're right into a nice grassy path with cleats that you can walk up that little hill. Rather than going all the way to the end and you really buy all of the debris that they built the field with up above that is protruding out of the ground, all kinds of metal objects and things of that nature. So that's the whole chest of like five years in five minutes. Sorry, I took too much time.
I guess, I thought the, because I went to a couple of baseball games. Yeah, I agree. Like when you, when you see that fence, your, your first reaction is this looks sloppy. But I had considered that this is, might be the safer option. So, you know, I guess maybe someone could help me. Like I drive by there on like a Sunday, I'll see like a bunch of guys my age playing. And it's sometimes I drive by and there's a bunch of kids playing. Will they move the fence in and out based on how strong or big the kids are? Is that always going to be the center field fence all the time? Definitely support them being on there. It's fun to see if that was a factor, if we're moving this fence in and out based on how strong the people are. Okay.
Yeah, we could talk about athletics and buildings and ground probably. Excellent. Thank you. If there's no other comments, we're going to close the session on public comments. And let me see, our next meeting, our next regular meeting is Tuesday, June 21st here at the high school auditorium. Public session is at 7:00 PM. I do want to mention, because we talked about this last time, is the possibility of changing the July meeting from the 26th to the 19th. I straw pulled the board and more of us are available on July 19th. So Ms. D Giuseppe will be available at that time. That, that would be her first official meeting. So I will put a note out and we'll have Mr. Cruz make that change. So our meeting will be July 19th.
Are we going to do that meeting back in the learning commons or are we going to stay on the stage?
I don't know. I will talk to Mr. D Giuseppe about that and, and see where we go.
Okay.
Because that might be, you know, it's just a more intimate setting and yeah. All right. So that's something to look at, the learning commons. And also at that meeting, we completed our self eval and Ms. Peterson will be at that meeting as well. So with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Moved by Mrs. Drappy, second by Mr. Day. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Walk, I need a verbal.
Aye.
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 And the meeting is officially adjourned. It's 8:17. Thank you and have a great night.